Now, I can put it all together.
Yeah.
Right? And...
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Public Savage School Board to order. Would you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all members are present. Do we have open forum tonight? Any speakers? No? All right, no speakers today for the open forum. So first on the agenda then will be the approval of the agenda. The first one is the, actually the approval of the agenda, sorry. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So made.
By Mary, second.
Second.
By Charles. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Move on to the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature and will be taken in one motion. Before I accept a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there anything that anybody wants to take off and discuss separately?
Yes, can I pull off number 7A7, which is the monthly check detail?
Okay, we will pull that off and I'll just move it down if I want to turn your page over. I'll make that like 7G after we do the consent agenda, if that's okay?
If we could pull 7C, the monthly financial report, just have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, what number is that, Jessica?
7C, the monthly financial report.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that will be... 7H. Anything else? Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus A7 and letter C.
So made, moved.
By Lisa?
Second.
By Mary? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Then move down to what is now 7G, the monthly check detail. I'll entertain a motion to approve the monthly check detail.
So made.
By Jess, second.
Can we discuss that?
As soon as I get a second.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion?
Oh, yes, I apologize.
No problem.
Yes, so can we discuss the CPM educational check on there? And Dr. Thomas, would you like to...
Sure.
Bring in Dr. Edwards to discuss that a little bit?
Sure, I'll just give some context here. So on the check register, you'll see a payment to CPM, which is the parent company of a curriculum publishing company. We have a trainer that we've utilized for our middle school curriculum. Our, at our last early release, our high school math department made a request to get math strategy training. They had, they, they have a curriculum that's been around since 2011 and we are going to be in the process at some point of looking for a new curriculum. And, but for their early release, they wanted to have a trainer come in and talk about a variety of math strategy trainings. And so the, the provider that has been doing training on a curriculum at the middle school level also did curriculum, not curriculum, strategy training at the high school with our high school math teachers per their request for their current curriculum that they have. I know a couple of you had questions about CPM at the high school. CPM is not being taught at the high school. It is a curriculum that is not of interest at all to our high school math department. Like I said, we are at a 2011 curriculum and with new math standards, we are going to have to adjust and go for a, a math curriculum review for the high school. And I'll just be very honest, that is not one that they have any interest in pursuing. But that trainer, because of efficiency, because we have a relationship with that trainer in our district, from a cost standpoint, that's who we utilize to do their training for the high school math strategy. Dr. Edwards, anything I've left out? Okay.
Can you elaborate on what specifically he, he taught within there? Was it a CPM kind of foundational thing?
No.
Or...
Has nothing to do with CPM. Director Johnson, he was training specifically on math strategies, you know, computation strategies, et cetera, for their, their current materials that they currently offer at the high school. This has nothing to do or any remote backlash to CPM whatsoever. It was agnostic training. So math strategy, doesn't matter which curriculum you're having, that's what the high school teachers were looking for for their early release. And Dr. Edwards, if you want to share any more specific content?
Yes, the, and, and just for clarity's sake, the ask was for multiple days. We did it in both January and February with our math teachers and at the high school level. And it was instructional strategies, as Dr. Thomas has spoken about, to meet the newly adopted and required state standards. And our curriculum, our existing curriculum is absent those state standards because, as the publication date would suggest in 2011. And there's work to be done in modifying to meet the required state standards. And so we're exploring and this was a conversation that had been had. And the trainer was somebody who had worked very effectively with our middle school teachers. Again, that was, that particular work was specific to CPM. This work was not. This was more broad instructional strategies aligned to the state standards.
Moving forward, I'll just add, in talking with the high school team, we will be looking about for next year ways that we may be piloting different type of curricular or resources for the high school math department. And that information will have more of an update for the board in March when we do a K-12 math review as well.
So this wouldn't fall in the realm of the CPM cost that we, that the board approved last year, the 373, right?
No, that...
That's correct.
That is correct. The, the cost of that was specific to the middle school. This was additional cost that was professional development funded through our professional development.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just have a question for Director Edwards. Can you elaborate? You mentioned the mass standards. Those standards, are you referring to the ones that are being updated? I believe it's in 27, 28? Or the one, which standards are you referring to?
Well, there have been a number of revisions to the standards. And in some cases, it's related to standards that are outdated even since our 2011 curriculum adoption, catching up to those standards and certainly looking forward as well. And again, as Dr. Thomas just spoke of, we intend to, the Teaching and Learning Committee in March to bring representation from our high school team in that K-12 update. And we'll bring that here to the board as well in March.
And then I just have a question, because I, I saw this on the register as well and I questioned about the CPM training. And my question is, is that, and I just want clarification on this. Was the training based on the methodology of like the big building thinking classrooms? Was that the training that they received in the high school? Or was it, or, go ahead.
The, the building thinking classrooms is, is a body of research that our teachers have looked at, K-12, as a foundational body of research. It is not, that too is not a curriculum. Once again, the instructional strategies might have some alignment with the framework of building thinking classrooms. We did have some teachers at the high school previously that were engaged in a book study at their choosing around those practices and made some instructional changes. The desire from the high school was that all teachers at the high school be engaged in this work and we felt like that was the best approach.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
We already voted on the consent agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay.
A couple of other questions from the check detail. I think, I don't think I got a response on the, there was two different invoices. I wasn't sure why they were split for the audit that are on here on page 67. I think it was about 18.5 and 11.2K. There's two separate invoices. Why were those split? And then are these mandatory auditory, audit services that we have to do annually? Or is that something unique?
Who was the vendor?
Page, I'm sorry, Director Mason.
67.
67, thank you.
Yeah. MMKR Certified Public. I'm sorry, who is the vendor?
MMKR. It was our, it's our auditor, Director Fredrickson, MMKR.
MMKR, yeah, that, that is our auditor.
But that's an annual required audit?
Correct. At the end of every year, we have, statutorily, we're required to have an external audit form come in. We are in the process of trying to get their estimate for next year because we are considering an RFP.
Okay. And we split those? I just was curious why they weren't on the over 25K because they were split invoices?
There was two different bodies of work. They had some additional post audit work, if you will, that they had to get some additional information. And so they just sent us two invoices.
Okay. And then my second question, I know we had some conversation around the Rotary membership on page 71. And we're just curious if that, what types of membership dues do we, or what groups, I guess, do we engage in? Is that the only group that we're part of? Or are there other membership dues that we're...
Yes, Director Mason, that would be the only community civic group in, I'm sorry, that would be one of two community civic groups. Chamber of Commerce is another one that we've historically had partnerships with. And again, these, these well precede me that they've had partnerships as a district in those two organizations. And then we also have affiliations with our lobbying organization. So MSBA, ASBO, AMSD. And we dropped, SEEK, yeah, thank you. We dropped SEEK just because of the redundancy within AMSD and MSBA. We, we did that last year. And I believe that is it in terms of the lobbying organizations for our professional associations.
I had a question about that as well. And as we look at our strategic plan with community partnerships, I think the question that came to mind is, while I think we're obviously looking to expand our community partnerships, being a member of an organization, just one specifically, raises in my mind some concerns about bias. Or when we think about other memberships, I'd ask, why are we not members of the Lions? Or why are we not members of the prior league players? So I, I too have the concern of why are we specifically paying for a membership with this organization when I think the Rotary, they've done great things in our, in our district. They would continue to partnership us. But when we become a member with an organization, it, it just becomes, it's concerning for a public school district to pick one organization to be a membership with versus other organizations that would probably take that membership dues as well. So I had a question about it as well.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
So first of all, the, the concept of it being biased is, is invalid, but it is part of our community engagement. And the superintendents, going back as long as I can remember, have been members of the local Rotary clubs as, as individual members to show up and represent the school district. And they also speak there to inform the Rotary and other, and they go to the Lions Club and they've gone to Club Prior and things like that. Some of those don't require memberships. Some of them invite us in, that sort of thing. So if, if the, if the board would like to discuss the memberships that we do altogether, particularly in terms of budget, then that probably should be a study session, discussion.
I would agree. Moving forward, if that's something we could, we can look at, at a future study session, I'd be open to taking that, that feedback maybe on the 24th when we, when I ask. If there's any future topics.
I think it's necessary, especially given our new community partnerships, our strategic plan. And especially given because, just because we've done something in the past doesn't mean it aligns with our new strategic, our new strategic plan. So I think it's definitely worth a conversation.
Well, keep that on your, on your mind for the 24th if you want to bring it back up. But I think there's no other discussion around the check detail. We have a motion and a second on the table.
I have one question. Does this mean we are not going to do the 7C and 7A in new business? Are we going to re-discuss this?
I was just gonna, I just decided to drop it at the, just, just after the consent agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
Two additional items.
Yeah, okay.
So again, I have a motion and a second on the table to approve the monthly check detail. If there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And then the monthly financial report. Jessica, you had some questions?
Thank you, yeah. So, I mean, obviously, the report is great. What I struggle a little bit with was just some of the, you know, it's a lot of year-to-date comparison versus the prior year. So looking at some of like, for example, the federal sources were 71% versus last year, 17% at the same time. I guess I'm curious if, if it's the will of the board, could we potentially get some type of like rolling monthly forecast, if it's available, to show like if we're on track, where we're forecasting be on track for the current period versus last year? Like I don't, you can't tell if I'm looking at this if that is like expected or if it's, you know, something out of the ordinary. You know what I mean? I don't know if that's readily available or if that's something others would find useful, but...
Yes, we can certainly add that report. There's a report that the Department of Education issues twice a month that shows all of the check payments for the state aid. I can certainly include that in here. We can, whatever the board requests, we can certainly try to put together a report to show. I think the intent, when it's in our financial statements, to give you three years of data and to kind of show what they were the last two years compared to the actuals from a couple of years ago. But we can certainly provide more detail if that's the will of the board.
For me, it would be helpful just to know if we're tracking or even like Food Service Fund, we're quite under where we were sitting last year. Is there a reason for that? Or is it just, you know, we're spending less? I don't, you know, it's hard to tell from this, but...
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would agree. I think this is something that, like I said, this report is great, but it's hard, especially as we are tracking, to ensure that we're staying within our budget guardrails. That I think it'd be super helpful to have just a one-page rolling budget, shall we say, for expenditures and revenue.
Chair, Chair, thank you. Chair, White and Board Directors, to Director Fredrickson's point, the, the reports can be generated through MDE. The only thing I would like, the caveat, if that's the will of the board, is doing a quick little in-service on the volatility of the reports. Education funding is not static whatsoever. And so what would on paper maybe alarm someone on a traditional budget process, if you will, in our industry? The volatility can swing quite a bit from one month to the next. And so I just want to be, I just want to preface that so that there's some context around how do you then read said report? So that we don't have assumptions going in. And then the regularity of the reporting and when we can get that information too. Tammy, is that a, is that a, I'm sorry, Director Fredrickson, is that a scheduled run? Or is, or is that something that would hit our upload date? Because that's the other factor that we're running into. Some of our financials, getting it in, in a current timeline to meet the Monday. Sometimes it might be a month behind to get everything put together. Because sometimes we get reports that get run or published on a Saturday when we don't get that until Monday. And then, you know, so we'll have to adjust the cadence of what will be coming to you that could sometimes be a month lag because of waiting for certain reports that we don't necessarily control or generate. Director Fredrickson?
Thank you. One of the things you'll notice is that the financial statements are for, through December. That's because we don't have a bank statement yet for January. It just, it physically is not possible to give you a financial statement including a bank reconciliation because we don't have it yet. So that's why the financial statements are always going to be a month behind. All the other reports, the check registers, those are just data runs that we pull off of Skyward. The MDE reports, they, for their payments, they usually post them fairly regularly. They, they run them on the 15th and the last day of the month. So those we can get, you know, right after those dates, they send the, it's like a check stub that shows all of the different aid payments that they make at that, on that payment. So that one we can certainly include if that's the will of the board, if you'd like to see that one.
I know that, that Lisa and Tammy and Dr. Thomas and I sat down and chatted about maybe the possibility of, of, because I don't want to pile anything else on top because it's already hard enough to get stuff to us on, on time. If there are things that we could wait for and end up seeing a month later that may not matter, if it allows Tammy to give us information that might matter a little easier and, and get it to us earlier so we have time to digest it. So that's things we talked about. Maybe that's, I don't know if that's a, hate to keep piling on study sessions. I don't know if that's a, a conversation that, that maybe the treasurer can have with Tammy about what, what, what do we really need at, at these meetings? What can wait? If we get it a month late, it doesn't really matter. Is it, that'd be a better way to go about it instead of adding on to a session?
Yeah, I think, yeah, thank you, Director White. I think during, even during our conversation with Director Fredrickson, you mentioned there is a report that is about like a, something that you already have created that shows a rolling budget. I mean, I don't think we're looking for you to recreate anything or pull anything off of MDE. I think what we're just really looking to understand is that if, like for instance, on the year-to-date expenditures were half a million over, well, if it was broken out that that is where we're forecasted to be and broken out by, oh, it's coming out of busing or where it's coming out of, on a monthly basis, I think holistically, it helps me as a board director to be able to see where are we coming in so there's no surprises at the end of the year. So yes, I'm happy to work with Director Fredrickson or if she has a couple, if you have a couple of examples you can show to the board. I think we've, I provided one from the Lakeville School District, I believe, which is, I don't know what your thoughts are on that one. I don't know if you saw that one or...
Okay, well then, if it's, if it's okay, Mary, I'm sorry.
Well, the only thing I would say is, first of all, the will of the board gives direction to them. But I am more concerned about the, not the volatility of the income and the expenses, but the fact that we, there's some months of the year that we just get hit, right? Particularly at the end of the year and in December. And then when we have these big bills come in, like the Ellers payment and things like that, that can actually make our fund balance look highly skewed. So, and it's the expenses too, not just the revenue off the MDE.
Right, that's the volatility I'm talking about. That'll make sure we have context.
So looking at this, we really need to take the annual view. And then somehow or another, and I'm sure that, because the budget already has accrued into the current fiscal year, those payments somehow or another reflect that. So we don't get statements saying, oh yeah, look at our fund balance, it's way high. And then next month, of course, it drops below our, our required level. So that happens throughout the year and it can be very misleading. The amount of time to explain that and the, and the ability to, to actually accurately put that into a report is something that, that is kind of a combination of teaching about finance, but then also the amount of work that, that would have to go into that in order to give an accurate picture at any one point in time. So I want to keep that in mind. And that's been an ongoing misinterpretation oftentimes when people grab one month over the next month when it can wildly fluctuate.
But is that maintain, like that's in the forecast, right? We would have forecasted that fluctuation, right? So it's more the comparison of actuals to what you're forecasting to a certain period of time that I think, you know, to highlight if we were expecting something that we maybe didn't get. You know what I mean?
Well, it's not that...
Not necessarily the fluctuation.
We can't really highlight the fluctuation, but highlight the, that we're on track to meet the end of the year. That's the thing, without actually looking at the physical months.
Right.
That's the thing that, that I would get concerned about. And that happens in any business, obviously.
Any other questions?
I think a comment would just be, I, you know, in hearing the different suggestions and will of the board is, you know, it is the determining factor. But also, you know, being able to work together with you, Tammy, I think to figure out what is the, the best way for this information to be presented, whether it be study session or our treasurer working with, I think it does need to be discussed among us so that we can, that, you know, Director Fredrickson isn't like, I'm hearing all of these different things. So making sure that the board comes together to give that direction, I think is really important. And to hear, you know, our different experiences in life and business is different than the, from, you know, it's, there's, it's vastly different. So making sure that she's hearing what we're looking for and then we come together and, and give that direction. I think that will be the most efficient, maybe.
Okay.
Chair White, if I may. First, I guess I would like to understand if this is the will of the board for that rolling monthly. And if so, then I would like to request that we do that by way of the treasurer, as the role of the treasurer, to codify what that actual report would look like aligned so that we can present that information back to...
Would it work if you, Lisa's gonna go ahead and sit down with Director Fredrickson sometime? If individual members have, have a request or some kind of information they'd like to see, get it to Lisa. You guys noodle something together and then bring it back to us.
That would be my request, Troy.
Okay, absolutely.
That's no problem.
Okay.
If that's the will of the board.
That sound good?
Are we good?
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion in the second?
Yeah.
On the financial?
You do.
I forgot. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the monthly financial reports, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. And now we move down to a resolution. We actually have two separate resolutions for two separate gifts. And if I can find them here. And we'll require two separate roll call votes because one of the gifts tonight is a donation of real property. So gift number one is a donation from Mortenson Company in the amount of $2,000 for supplies for the MinCaps Trades Program. And I'll entertain a motion to accept that gift.
So made.
By Amy, second by Charles. Any discussion? This does require a roll call. Jessica?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Jess? I was gonna keep that separate.
We named the names. Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries seven zero. Gift number two is a donation of real estate from a Nancy Schonwetter in the approximate value of $16,000 for just a little bit over an acre of property right behind Redtail Ridge Elementary School. Is there a motion to approve that gift?
So made.
By Lisa, second.
Second.
By Amy? Any discussion? Hearing none. Jess?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Jessica?
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries seven zero with gratitude. And next on the agenda is Laker Pride, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White, Board Directors. This evening, we've got two things for discussion. The first is our student spotlight and gonna showcase our student mentoring program between some of our high school students and our, our Laker leader mentors and some of our local mentees. And so Principal Kaczynski will come forward and he is going to set the stage and the context. And I have certificates of appreciation for everyone there and I'll hand those to you, Principal Kaczynski, to pass out to the students afterwards.
Good evening, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. We have some fine gentlemen here that we're excited to share about. This past year, actually it was kind of back to last year. Our fourth, fourth graders do a kindness retreat every year. And new last, or newer last year was the involvement of the Laker leaders with Jeff Marshall. And just seeing the impact that the students, the high school students have made with our elementary students is impactful. Like they, they look up to them so much, they're so excited to see them. And we wanted to think about how could we make something kind of sustainable, more than just like a one-time thing, so it could kind of build that relationship. So unfortunately, our amazing dean of students, Samantha Schenkelberg, is not here today. She really was kind of the, the... She really was kind of the work behind this. She collaborated with Principal Abdallah at the high school and Sam Oak and kind of created a program where we outlined the opportunity for, I think we have six high school students that came. And I do believe there's a total of, how many visits? Six visits, so they kind of mapped it out. And then, of course, creating like a little curriculum of like what they would do, including an opportunity for lunch. But the high school students were coming over to develop relationships with some of our fourth grade boys, really specifically aimed for that male leadership opportunity. So here we are, we have some students here tonight that are gonna share with you some of their highlights. And with that, I'll turn it over to all of them.
My name, my name's Jake and I like the program because it was nice to meet people, different people, and it had exciting stuff for us to do.
My name is Jefferson and I really like this program because we could share, or the high schoolers could share their thoughts and what to do because they've been through these type of situations.
My name is Brendan and I like the program because I like playing the games and writing on the sheets.
Hi, my name is Steven and my favorite part about the program is I can see my friends and have a conversation with the high schoolers.
Hi, I'm Skylar. My favorite part about the program is being a role model for these kids and showing them what they can do while, just in school and just have fun while they're doing it.
Hi, my name's also Jake and I just love being an influence in the young kids coming through the school system and having an impact on what they do every day.
So as you can see, there's a mutual benefit here. Not only is it a great opportunity for our high school students to develop some leadership opportunities, but also for our fourth graders to have the opportunity to develop some relationships and with things like that. So with that, again, I want to say thank you to Mr. Schenkelberg and Mr. Abdallah and Sam Oak for helping with some of the transportation and kind of the initial setup. So it's something that we do hope to continue in the future.
Any board members have any questions?
I have a question. So when you, this is for the students, the younger students. When you first started meeting with your high school mentors, were you nervous at all?
I guess I wasn't really nervous. I was just excited to be in this program.
Wonderful. Anyone else want to share?
I was not very nervous. I was excited to meet new people and to have fun.
I think that's great. That says a lot about you high schoolers, too.
Yeah.
Much.
Thank you.
Okay, one more here. I would like to call Major Promotable, David Brown, forward. Or as we just call him, Dave from the ALC. You know, he was recently deployed overseas and has spent some quality time doing some great work around the world. And we are spoiled to be able to have David with us every single day and the impact that he makes at our ALC. And when he returned this summer, or this year, he was sharing with our learning leaders just about some of the experiences that he's had and just some of the, kind of the social structures, like education that he saw in different parts of the world and just how good we have it here and how proud we are to be Americans, given the perspectives that he shared with us. And we are just honored that we can call you one of our own. And so we thank you for your service here in our community, but we also thank you for your service in our country and what you do every single day. And I'd like to give you an opportunity to share a little perspectives about your recent deployment.
Thanks so much, Dr. Thomas, Board Chair White, and Board of Directors. First of all, I don't know how I can follow that. That is just great to see our wonderful students. It's great to see what's happening here. So maybe what I'll do is just begin by saying, standing here as a veteran, now having served in two deployments and multiple international training and exercises overseas during my military career, I'll just, I'll start echoing your comments, Dr. Thomas, by saying, I could not be more proud to be an American and I am so grateful to live in the United States. It's the best country. Serving and working in multiple countries during this last deployment specifically really provided me with a valuable experience to work with and experience different cultures and different systems of our allies and partners. And these experience, experiences I think will be really beneficial for me as I work to support our families at Bridges and our students at the ALC. My wife, Maria, who is a teacher at Prior Lake High School, and myself are just incredibly grateful for the support of our district leadership from my military service as well as my team at Bridges. While I was not in combat during this last deployment, the demands were incredibly challenging and taxing as a service member. And I could not imagine that experience, what it would be like if I didn't have the consistent and unwavering support for my leadership, for our leadership and my military service here in the district. So I'd like to personally thank you, Dr. Thomas, Ms. Herman, Dr. Edwards, and Dr. Bezek for their support during that time, as well as the, as well as the board here. Those of us who serve while in a civilian career really rely on that support while we serve our nation. You all simply could not be more of a patriotic employer. Your support was especially valuable as I transitioned away from Bridges and into active duty. And then when I transitioned back from active duty here back into the district and your warm welcome and your love and care, I can be, it just could be felt through and through, so thank you. I would like to say I'm deeply grateful for my team at Bridges Area Learning Center as well for the great work they've done this past year supporting our district and communities, families and students. So I would like to say and maybe kind of close just by saying, what we do here at Prior Lake Savage, it has, it definitely has global effects. I had the privilege during this deployment, as well as the last deployment, while serving overseas, to serve with a Bridges graduate, Andre. He was a fellow service member and it was a pleasure serving with him. And it was so nice to see that grad and Prior Lake Savage Area School grad do so great overseas. And I relied personally on him for the work that we did. And maybe I'll just close by saying this. That's an example of the importance of Bridges, Prior Lake High School, and more broadly, the work we do here in Prior Lake Savage. Our public schools, ladies and gentlemen, are the great equalizer in the United States, providing an opportunity for all students and an education for all of our children. Each year, we serve our community here in Prior Lake Savage, all of our teachers, administrators, all of the work of all of the staff, supporting and inspiring our students to reach their full potential. It was great to see while deployed so many public school students serving our country and specifically our Bridges grad fulfill this mission and do so well as a veteran. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to serve our country. Thank you so much for your support that you offered me during this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Major Brown, for your words and everything.
Thank you and welcome back.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And that is all, Chair White.
All right. Next on the agenda, personnel items, Director Herman. None tonight? Okay. No unfinished business. We will move on to new business. Director Frederickson, the 25-26 enrollment update.
I have included in here the monthly enrollment update for 24-25 that you see every month. You can see that we have 11 fewer kids than we had October 1st. We still have 29 more students than we had at the end of last year. So it's pretty consistent, not a lot of impact changes for the current year enrollment. The other report that's on here is kindergarten enrollment that we're tracking as we look forward to the budget projections for next year. Obviously, one of the pieces of the puzzle is kindergarten. So as of last Monday, we have 301 students from our district enrolled in kindergarten with 78 open enrolled for a total of 379. And then I have the last six years' data to show how that compares with the last few years. You can see we are slightly down from what we had last year and quite a bit down from the previous three years before that. And then I've also included, just for context, on those same years, how many students were enrolled on July 1st? Because obviously, we're doing enrollments now through September. So just as a point of clarification, what did it look like in July? And then what it looked like for the official October 1st count? So for instance, for 24-25 and February 3rd of 2024, we had 421 kindergarten enrollments. We ended it with July having 525 and then the official October count was 552. So you can see kind of the trend and as we do projections, we'll continue to watch this and make whatever adjustments we need to. But as of right now, we're down a few kindergarten kids from what we've anticipated in the past few years. So I can take any questions?
Anyone have a question for Director Frederickson? Okay.
Thank you for breaking that out.
Next, we'll move on to the 25-26 preliminary budget update. Directors Herman, Edwards, and Frederickson.
Well, this, we have just updated our timeline. Obviously, we, the last couple of years, we've tried to get allocations out to schools by the middle of February. We've kind of joked that it's their Valentine's Day present. Obviously, we're not gonna make that this year. So we're moving everything down by a couple of weeks. We'll have the study session on February 24th where we'll be asking for kind of a thumbs to give us direction for that final allocation. And then we'll send allocations out that week of March 7th to all of our learning leaders. And then everything else just kind of got moved down two weeks.
Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair White, I'll just add too. Wanted to just thank the board for the discussion that we had initially on the 27th, 27th of January. And one of the areas that I think was a deeper discussion that evening was around how we're meeting the needs of our advanced learners and just want to share with our board and our community that we are continually committed to serving all learners, whether they need special ed, gifted education, or anything in between. And our team is continually looking at ways that we can address how we're offering that model of support for our kids. You know, working with our staff as well as looking at the confinements that we have within our budget in ways that we can continually make those support structures as best as possible. So more to come when we provide an iterative update on the, or I'm sorry, not iterative, another update on the next two, two weeks from today. And that we'll be coming back to the board with that as well. And also finalizing some of the other areas of reductions that we were working through that were still kind of in process the last time that we shared our initial presentation with you all. So more to come in two weeks.
All right. Any questions for Director Frederickson or Dr. Thomas?
Yeah, I have a question. Just, you know, thinking back to our last meeting. And then I went back and looked at the minutes. And it says in the minutes that after a lengthy discussion, a revised budget update will be brought to the board on February 10th. And so my question is, is that, so are you saying that we're gonna see the revised budget on February 24th versus February 10th?
Yeah, we're bringing, yeah, we're bringing the revised timeline for our budgeting process that we brought today because that's something that we're changing that would kind of change our schedule. And then on the 20th, I'm sorry, whatever that date is, two weeks from now, we'll have the additional aspects of the budget reductions that we'll be presenting to you all in terms of our final recommendations that we would provide to the board. So our update was around the budgeting timeline process and shifting all of that so we can accommodate the changes necessary for us to make those decisions.
So I think my concern is, coming out of that study session, there wasn't a real will of the board as far as the direction of the budget. And I think it's important, as Director French mentioned this evening, that it's really important to ensure that there is will of the board, especially regarding the budget. So at what point, if you're gonna be presenting a revised budget on the 24th, I mean, is this something that we should be discussing this evening regarding the last budget that we looked at and feedback regarding direction as far as the will of the board goes? I'm just concerned because that piece, that element was missing. I kind of walked away going, I'm not sure where we're headed with this. And I know I've had a couple of community members reach out and kind of say, kind of ask the same questions based on watching that meeting.
That's what you said is gonna go on on the 24th now instead of tonight.
That is what I just shared.
Okay.
I guess my question is, coming out of the comments that were made of, on the meeting, the last meeting, what direction are you basing your revised budget on, I guess is my question? Because there wasn't a will of the board.
Correct. So we presented that information to the board for your initial processing of our recommendations to you all. And in terms of our recommendation on the 24th, that's where we would be seeking the actual directional support. So again, as we shared two weeks ago, we weren't looking for directional support. This was mainly a presentation to the board and that we would be coming back to you all with a final recommendation, you know, in a subsequent study sessions, as well as our update here, changing our timeline to reflect some of the adjustments that we would have to make because a lot of folks in our district are, were preparing for staffing, et cetera. So that's where we'd be looking for that directional support.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is that we, early on in our budget process, we also talked about that, and I don't remember the actual meeting, but you had talked about, Dr. Thomas, bringing two possible scenarios to the boards that we could, shall we say, look at the scenarios and make some decisions. And I remember the specific term saying we couldn't cherry pick the two different scenarios. So at this point, we've only seen one scenario. We've had some board feedback at the meeting. I guess I'm trying to figure out in my mind, when are we gonna see? My concern is going into the meeting on the 24th that we're gonna be shown something and I'm just concerned, you know, like we're not having enough time to really process this and/or make sure that our, the feedback that we're hearing from the community is included in the budget process. It seems, it seems like there may be, maybe we need to add another meeting in there or something. I mean, I know nobody extra, wants extra meetings, but.
So I guess my question would be, what was your intention as far as when we would receive the information that we'll be seeing on the 24th, so we have time to digest it and?
Yeah, so that would be coming back to you all on next Monday's submission to the board for the 24th. And again, that night, I think I shared, so I don't recall Director Atkinson talking about multiple scenarios. I do recall cautioning around cherry picking, for sure, that as we, as we look at a target of $4 million, we presented a target to you all last week, heard perspectives from a variety of you next week or last, or whatever, two weeks ago. And that when we come back, that night I shared that we may have to revise our budgeting timelines because we typically would do our staffing allocations mid-February. because we typically would do our staffing allocations mid-February. And that we would have to likely adjust that. And that we would be off about a week and a half, maybe two weeks. And that was something that we would say that we'd be coming on the 24th because we weren't looking for directional support. So I do recall talking about that, that evening as well. So that was my recollection of the process. So unless I recollected that differently.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I remember I gave feedback, Director Mason gave feedback. But there was no will of the board based on plan.
That is, that is true.
So that's, that's my concern is that, how are you making decisions on these budget cuts without will of the board?
And, and so what we presented that evening, there, there wasn't anything from the board at that point to say, as, as a board body, to go in one direction or not. And so what we are continuing to move forward with is what we've shared initially. One of the points of feedback that I heard that we spent a lot of time discussing that night was around some of our talent development aspects. And so that was very loud and clear to me. That is something that I brought back to our team based upon the discussions that we were having to figure out how we continue to move forward with a $4 million target. But definitely, there was a lengthy discussion around some concerns in that specific aspect. And so we are really working through how we can address that. That was, that was one area that, that I took as a superintendent to give direction to my team to explore different pathways for meeting that need. Outside of that, I think a lot of where we shared our information and the rationale as to how we can make that happen, we feel very confident with. And so that's, that's the direction that I walked away with based upon the depth of where we spent our conversation points. But yes, you're right, at the very end, there was no direction to say we want this or don't want that. But it was, I believe it was pretty clear in terms of a specific area of one aspect of a line item that was there, that we wanted to continue to have some different exploration there before we would come back with regards to presenting a budget reduction.
I have a question too. With these, with the schedule here, we're talking about the immediate budget going into next year. But we also have some pretty big decisions and some deadlines that have to occur on some decisions that will affect the year after that. I don't see those reflected here. For instance, closing of a school potentially, the, the, the disposition of this building, a few other things that we now have deadlines to notify the state and the MDE for. Is that buried in here somewhere? Are we?
Chair, Chair Fran, or I'm, I'm sorry, Director France. That, that is, no, that, that's not buried here. As we discussed that evening, that's a longer-term conversation. We have until October of 2025 to be able to deliver that notice to MDE. So.
I thought we had to give them a heads up in July or August? And then we finalize it in October?
No, you, you have to, you can notify as early as July. And we have until October of 2025 to give our, our notice to MDE. We have time with that. We're prioritizing the things that we need to do for next fall right away. And then, then we'll start working on that longer-term kind of repurposing of, of buildings in the district.
Okay.
I think my concern, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. It's just if, if we, on February 24th meeting, maybe don't have, we're not where we feel like we need to be. If there's further adjustments that people are requesting or the will of the board, is there more time for adjustments beyond that? I think maybe is my concern, is that kind of where you're going?
Yeah, and also like, I'm, I'm just thinking from your standpoint, I feel, I feel bad that we weren't able to give you will of the board at that meeting. So like, would it be helpful for you when make, you know, making these changes to the budget to have a discussion about what we saw and what our thoughts are? We've had a couple of weeks to think about it, to give you that feedback now? That's kind of what I thought we were doing this evening. So I, I, that's why I'm a little, that's why I'm trying to get, get an understanding here of why we're here tonight talking about this budget. So would that, is that, would that be helpful? Is that something that, like?
So, so I would, I would say that if there, if there is direction from the body of the board after processing the discussion that you feel is important for us to take under consideration, for us to meet that $4 million target. And there's something specific, then, then that, I guess that would be helpful to, to understand and know that. If that's what the whole will of the board is.
I would say that the board table, the business meeting probably isn't the venue for that. And that as these numbers, and hopefully people are meeting with administration and meeting with you to vet out some of that so that that is all inclusive on the 24th. And we can dedicate the majority of that particular study session to this very important topic. But I'm not sure we should conflate a business meeting with the study session in which we do want a lot of that to occur and go in depth, I hope, at the study session as well.
Director France, I would just challenge you. I've seen other boards give direction at, at work sessions on it. And given the timeliness of the, we really have two weeks. And I think also, to be transparent with our community, I think it's important for the community here to hear what the will of the board is going forward. There's a lot of unanswered questions about what's, what is the will of the board regarding these budget cuts?
Well, you just exactly said what I said. It's a work session, this is a business meeting.
No, I'm saying it's been done at, at business meetings as well.
I would suggest, because, because I've talked to all of you about this, and the lateness of the meeting was my handy excuse. And that, and that was my, when I dropped the ball on not getting the will of the board that night. And I, I think I've owned that with all of you. I think we're at the point now where what I can commit to the board is, if we can, if you can, if we can wait till the 24th, we'll take as much time as is required to get the will of the board to make sure these cuts are, are, are what the board wants to have happen. And I'm, I'm confident we can accomplish that on the 24th. If there's a scenario that pops up that you just can't find agreement, well, I guess we'll deal with it at that time. I'm not trying to, you know, cut off discussion here tonight. But I think the kind of discussion that we need to have suits itself much, much better at a, at a work session. And we'll take whatever time is necessary. That's my commitment to the rest of you, whatever it takes to, to get to agreement and consensus, so.
Is it possible that we can get the presentation on Monday? I mean, the Monday prior to the meeting? So that we have, so we have enough time to process this?
A week from today.
I think we always do get it as soon as possible.
There are times that we're not able to get certain information based upon when we get the reports. But generally speaking, yes, we will, for this, we will have that presentation for you all on Monday.
Maybe the 17th, yeah.
Dr. Thomas, with that, are you going to group those things together like you did some of those other items? Or is everything going to be individually done?
Group, what do you mean by group?
So there were some items, and I don't have it just pulled up, that were, do you have it?
Yeah.
By chance? Oh, perfect. Look at that. Pause.
Benefits of being a pack rat, my friend.
Perfect, right. So. Director Olsted has, so elementary, right, increase in class sizes, middle school cap, right, and.
That was done, that doesn't count.
Right, so that one was all done, right? Everything was capped together? And then elementary school, sped paras, high school sped paras, right? All those were grouped together under one reduction. Is it that how you plan on laying everything out? Or is everything going to be itemized, right? So that if, I think, because as Director Atkinson's speaking, right, we didn't really have a consensus, right, which is, which is fine. We can talk about all of that, but if we can ultimately go line by line, right, it might be a better option. And maybe that's something you and Director White can work out, you know?
Sure, Director Johnson, I think I'm tracking what you're saying now. So yeah, you'll have itemized categories, as you see there, listed out for, for you all to have discussion, you know, as a board. And, and again, if you all feel like there's something within that package that, you know, you, similar to tonight, like the consent agenda, it was a package. Well, there's something you wanted to pull out to have more discussion. If you want to pull something out of that to have deeper discussion on that, great. And if there's additional information that we need to get you on that that we might not have included for you in terms of the context on that, we could, we could, you know, follow back up with that. I guess for us, and, and, you know, what we will strategize to do is there are, if there are staffing-related aspects, I think we will prioritize that as some bigger discussion so that we can move forward with some of our building staffing protocols and then talk about other aspects that might not have as direct correlation to the staffing process. So that we can continue, if, if we are in a point where we need to continue and kind of bifurcate the process, we have one aspect that can go forward, similar to what we did in December, while we work through some of these other aspects. So I think we could kind of chunk it that way, if that would be more helpful.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just have one more question. Will the high school enrollment be completed by then? So we have an idea of what that, what, you know, the FTE savings is from that?
Our windows should be, yeah.
I know it's coming, it's approaching, but I was curious if by the 24th, we'll have that?
Are we, is it in first part of March that it's officially?
The registration process will be complete, but the actual breakdown of staffing in terms of FTE in each department won't be done until early March.
Okay.
That sounds good, thank you.
There's no other questions? We will move on to the 2025 legislative platform, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White. So several of you have weighed in a little bit on the platform. And I think we have the intent from our last discussion. I think some general feedback is, can we condense it even further? And then I think there was several points made around the graph that currently exists in there of striking that, streamlining, streamlining then the narratives around the, the funding formula aspect. And then cleaning up some of the other bullet language below to reduce that. And I've got a couple of suggestions from several of you. So the content itself, even with the changes of some of the bullets, doesn't change the integrity of the, the platform. And several of you had some really good discussions or ideas of what could be done, but it wouldn't fundamentally change the platform in and of itself. There would be maybe just some stuff that we would just pull off and that could be some subordinated, you know, talking notes if necessary. Additionally, we will be giving you a Word document. If you recall, last time, we had that big, huge spreadsheet that had all the mandates that were in here. Well, we've had, we've been running our own sub-spreadsheets on that. Today, we converted that into a more user-friendly Word document. So we'll be giving you that of actual cost of some of the bigger impact statutes that came under unfunded. So you'll have that as an accompanying document so that when you're in conversations with folks, you would be able to say, and, and what does this mean for us? It means this. So you'll have that as well. And we'll be pushing that out to you all tomorrow. So my ask was going to be, you know, given what you see here in the, the last 5% tweaks that we would need to make with the graphic as well as condensing a couple of those bullets, my ask, Chair White, is that if, if it's the will of the board that would support, that we can make those final few edits? And if that's something that the board would be okay doing, we could discuss that tonight. And then I'll take notes on here, clean it up, and then you all would approve it pending those final edits that we could discuss here tonight real quickly because they weren't substantive.
Okay. So having heard that, are there any comments or questions or want to make sures?
I just have a question about the establish, I, thank you. I agree with many of the comments that, that you said, so thank you. The, the question that I have surrounding the establish a K-12 Assessment Review Task Force, I know we talked a little bit about this. Last time it had something about the ACTs in here. I'm just wondering if we can be a little bit more specific of what we are asking of this. It says, "We support the creation of K-12 Assessment Review Task Force to evaluate current testing requirements and recommend improvements." Well, what kind of improvements? "That better supports student learning and achievement." And are we looking for, "To better support understanding student outcomes"? One thing that I've learned is that Minnesota standards do not align with the national standards, the national assessment of education standards. And so, you know, to be more specific here, could we say something like, "We support the creation of Assessment Review Task Force to align our standards with the national standards?" Or to, I just feel like there's something missing here. It's very vague. And I think there's, it leaves a lot of room for interpretation with the Minnesota Department of Education.
Yep, so thank you for that, Director Atkinson. So that evening, we were talking about, aside from the ACT component being like the, the thing for the high school, we were talking about the disconnect, to your point just now, of assessments, current Minnesota assessments and current Minnesota standards, let alone any national standards. But, so this is really talking about developing an assessment protocol that actually assesses the actual standards that we're expected to teach. So that's the crux of this whole thing. So I think the whole notion of aligning assessments to standards as well as having a better high school, more universal assessment, such as the ACT or ACT or SAT, those were the salient features of that. So we could, I think to your point, assessments aligned to standards is the key aspect there.
So are you basically referring that, like, you'd like to see them rewrite the MCAs so that they're better aligned with standards? Is that what you're saying here, or?
Correct.
Is it, it's interesting, I watched a school board meeting from Rochester and their presenter said it costs a million dollars every time they rewrite the MCAs.
Is it a billion?
Was it a billion? Oh, it was a billion.
It's a lot of money.
A billion, okay. So like, is that realistic?
So, so I think, yeah, I think, I think we need to, I, I would say this, Director Atkinson, there's a lot of things that you're going to hear on legislative platforms that are likely never going to see the light of day. We also see this in the whole legislative process. There's bills that are introduced that will likely never see the light of day. But you're, you're stating your value set of what needs to happen. So I will tell you, it's a challenge for me as a superintendent to receive standards of instruction that we have to hold our staff accountable to and trained to. And then we have an assessment system that's legs behind the standards. We had this discussion with you all, I think, about science. I think when Ben was here as well. So our staff are beyond frustrated with that because when they're busting tail in the classroom and doing great work and the assessment then that gets highlighted and printed, you know, everywhere, is lagging, it's not reflecting then the rigorous standards that the state has just adopted in past, let alone NCES standards. So that disconnect is something that's very real. Will it change in our career lifetimes? I don't know. But I think we need to keep pushing that conversation because you can't have that level of misalignment and think things are going to be smooth for our students. And I think that's the challenge that, you know, we're trying to make sure that they're aware of so that they can continue working. And if they can't do the whole billion, or whatever it might be, great. Then let's figure out what chunk can you tackle? You know, you know, as they say, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So let's figure out what kind of bite we want to offer up that they can begin to take that would matter to us. That's, that's, I think, our big key here.
So I appreciate the explanation. I'm just wondering if like the wording on that just needs to be buttoned up a little bit? Maybe we support the task force to align, to align standards to MCA stand, to MCA testing to better reflect student outcomes?
I would say no. I think the, the purpose of the, of the wording, and I, first of all, I think a lot of the wording here is too broad for me also, particularly the new mandates and unfunded mandates. But here's the thing, is that they may choose to abolish MCAs. They may choose to eliminate third grade or 11th grade, like we talked about. That would be one way to also save money and replace it with the ACTs, et cetera. But I think that the whole purpose of this is to bring the various groups from around the state together to come up with what really is the most effective way and their experience and all the various districts' experience to evaluate where our students are. And, and whenever you say you're going to align to one standard or the other, you're, you're aligning to a volatile variable in general. And one of the things that a lot of the states do is they try to compete on that level. They'll say, "Our standards are higher than our neighboring standards." You know, "Our, we're better than Wisconsin," or something like that. So I think that aligning to the national standards also has some cons to it. So I think what we're trying to do here is, So I think what we're trying to do here is introduce it. This will not happen in a biennium year, but we're introducing the concept, and we're getting it started. And so therefore, it's not brand new when they do put it together. And it's not something that will happen overnight, and it's not something that, that we want to happen overnight because we want a lot of public discourse on this.
So, so if I could just recapture that, and I think we have it here. We support the creation of a K-12 assessment review task force to evaluate current testing requirements. I'm sorry, and align to local and national standards that best support student learning, achievement, and outcomes. So I think that captures.
I'm not in favor of the align to local and national standards because I don't want to add in a variable that we're asking them actually to fix. There are local standards, you know, I mean, so we're contradicting ourselves, and also we're limiting it to, I'd rather leave that open and have, and have the group get together and say, is this what we want?
I, 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 I hear you, and I would just, I understand the aligning, because standards change, we know that, that, that can change, I understand that. I don't think, if we're, if we're, if you look at more common core type of standards that have greater staying power and research base, and we, yes, they will change, you know, iteratively over time. The test itself could have inherent flexibility to accommodate for that. But I, the, the group that I'm a part of, I know Dr. Edwards and teams are a part of, many suits are a part of, is challenging the lack of alignment to standards right now. And, and I'm telling you, it's, we, we are set up to fail as, as school districts because that discrepancy, I believe, would be greater than managing for changing standards, than lack of, of alignment to standards, period.
Well, that's, the problem that I have with that is the fact of which standard, because our national standard, by the way, is not the common core. Common core is kind of like where it wanted to go.
Correct.
And our national standards are far behind other countries, way far behind. So I, I think what I'd like to do is, is figure out if they want to put more effort into creating a Minnesota state standard or if they even want to use the term standard.
I mean, that, that would be worked in the work group, but I think for us, from where we're at now today, standards are driving K-12 education in Minnesota. And like, that's the here and now. And our, 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 our whole academic side of the house is aligned to state standards. That's where, that's where we're going.
I, I get that. And what I've been fighting at the national level is that Minnesota ranks 50 out of all 50 states in many, many areas. So what I'd like to do is have the concept of that standard challenged in this assessment process. If we start to limit ourselves there, I, I think we are going to basically create a goal that's also elusive and probably not where we want. What I don't want to do is, is put an anchor on anything before we actually take off, if that makes a difference. So I don't like the word standards because of the variation in them, the volatility, and also where it sits. And I feel very passionate about that because I see where we sit with regards to other states when I go to the national standards area and where they're arguing currently about the national, what we consider national standards. And also the common core group that's based out of Denver. So it, it is concerning to me, and I'd like to leave that open. However, on the new mandates and fully fund existing requirements, if we don't go in with the top three and all of us say at least the top three that we want to get rid of, we're leaving it up to legislators to cherry pick which ones of those, even if we do prioritize it. You walk into a legislator's office with the list of 70 things. That's, that's, we're probably going to get none, and that's what concerns me. So I would like to, on the new mandates.
I have three that I can suggest when we get, get up there. So I, I, I got three that I'll, I'll share in a second. Sorry Chair, I don't mean to be facilitating.
Yes, so to, to the review task force. The goal of that is just to establish a task force. Is that correct?
A task force that will look at state assessments juxtaposed to standards. And maybe standards versus local, national, that distinction is the issue. But yes, we have, every state will have standards, including Minnesota.
But there's no, but there's no current task force.
There, there is no said current task force. So that's what we're looking to have, and they would have this conversation.
Right.
That Director Franz and I were just having as a team to kind of flesh it all out.
So our number one goal is just to get them to agree to establish a task force, right?
To start this conversation.
Perfect. I agree with everything that's on here already.
Okay.
So I'm happy with it. And then let's fight the other battle, right, of the national and the local and all the other things. Let's get them to agree to actually doing a task force. So what you have on there is A-OK.
So I have a question though. Would that be something that they would change in law? Is creating a task force? I mean, or is that just something that they're up?
They would, they would, they would, well, they would create a statute to direct MDE to have. So they would have a statute, they would change law.
Be written in the law that you're saying that they would, just like they create a task force to do whatever curriculum review or whatever.
They would give directive to MDE.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm supportive of that, to be honest with you. I mean, I, I like the idea of us aligning our standards to national standards because I, I hear your point Director Franz, but unfortunately Minnesota does rank in the bottom quartile of where our standards, how do you say, align with national standards. And there's other states, Tennessee being one that I think of, as I've looked at this national standards and how we rank, in that Tennessee aligns very closely with national standards. And where like our kids are, you know, we have a fourth grade reading level. Minnesota is, to be considered proficient, we're at 55% proficiency. And if you compare it to the national level, they're at 32% proficiency. So our standards are not aligning, meaning like our kids are not hitting, you understand what I'm saying?
I, I, I understand.
My passion goes behind that because if we're saying our kids are proficient at 55% proficiency, that they're, and nationally they're only hitting 32% proficiency, there's huge disalignment or whatever with that. And so that's kind of where I thought this was going. I didn't understand it. It was really like creating a task force.
Well, I think it's, I think it's twofold Director Atkinson. What you just read kind of speaks to the issue of the disconnection of assessments in general, no matter what state you're in.
Right.
And standards. And right now, our reading standards, for example, our current state assessment, MCA, doesn't accurately assess the foundational skills for reading. It, it, it assesses the conceptualness of reading.
I understand.
But not the science skills of reading. So when we talk about proficient or not proficient, we're not even having the right conversation because we are not looking at the right data set. And so when I said MDE, it would be not just MDE in a vacuum. I'm sure there'd be other electeds, MDE, practicing suits, teachers, et cetera. This task force would be a big statewide task force to encompass this kind of type of conversation.
I understand. Thank you.
I might have misspoke about just solely MDE.
No, I understand.
And the other thing is, is that at the national, not all states report. So that's a, not all districts report. So going to the point of where we want to be and what our goals are, are, and, and just getting the task for it to get those tasks done, I think is where I would like to focus. If we throw too much in this.
I agree.
The statute, which, I was hoping they could just direct it through a funding thing, but you're right, they probably have to do an amendment to an existing bill. We're going to throw too much in that. We got to get these, we got to get the task force in there. We have, that has to be the first step. And, and let the process work out to their, to their goal.
So.
That's the only thing, and, and again, if we throw too much in there, we won't get anything.
Alright.
What if it read, review task force to evaluate the misalignment of current testing requirements? That would kind of address vaguely whether it's state or national fine, but.
You're drawing a conclusion, we're hoping the task force comes to. That's, that's the thing that I would.
Well, I think we are stating that there is a misalignment. That's what we're trying to establish.
That's why we're asking for this, because there is a misalignment.
But there's a misalignment, as used to state, juxtaposed between all, everything else that's going on.
Right.
Again, I, I feel very strongly about this, that let's focus on getting that task force. Let's get that milestone out of the way. And given what's going on with the Department of Education that sets the standards, we don't know where we're going to be by the time the task force gets formed.
I hear you. So if we, if we, if we take that element out to Director Franz's point, with the evolution of standards right now, that could likely be a byproduct. If we're talking about, we want to be able to assess the learning of our students, recognize their achievement, and point to outcomes. That's, that's what we're looking for. That's the latter part, I think, of what you said Director Atkinson. So if we just, for right now, suspend the standards conversation to let the task force jump into that, it would be about supporting the creation of this task force to evaluate current testing requirements that better support student learning, achievement, and outcomes. And just leave standards out while that evolves through the task force. Okay, got it.
And if I may, just in speaking with Senator Pratt and Representative Baikberg, since our study session, kind of discussing things where, that we all talked about together at the study session, I asked specifically to both of them, you know, tell me more about our platform and, and what weight it carries. Because our platform that was, you know, presented at the study session is in line with MSBAs.
Any MSD, everybody, yeah.
Correct. And, and both of them shared specifically that that truly is the platform that, that they use. So we can spend a lot of time wordsmithing and, and talking about all of this, but it's really important that Prior Lake Savage area schools has its story. Like the, it's, it's something that both of them shared. And I kind of touched on it at the study session, and it may, it might come across, you know, not as weighty as what, I think what they're trying to say is, but like, what's specific to our district?
Right.
And that's what they use when they're, you know, discussing.
And that's the testimony, and that's the bullets that you'll be getting.
Yeah, so I just want to, like, I appreciate all the discussion and the platform. Our, what we, what we have printed out at the end, you know, it's, it's in line with MSBA, you know, AMSD. I don't think that is as important as, you know, do we know our specific story? And that, that they have that to, you know.
You would have that as well.
Right.
And that's the bullet version and with dollar figures around some of the mandates that we'll give, give to you all. Okay. If I may, Chair White, just work up. Is that okay?
Sure, absolutely.
So I will tell you, this has been a real big point of contention with MESA, our Elementary Principals Association, our very own Patrick, he, he testified about this too. But the non-exclusionary discipline repeal, giving student, or giving administration the need to be able to address that as necessary. And we don't have principals looking to suspend kids, but in a situation where that's our last option, we don't want that option withdrawn. So that's what that speaks to. Okay? Are we good with that?
Yep.
Yes. Alright. The pause new mandates and fully fund existing requirements. I think, Director Franz, you talked about the top three. And if I may be so bold, maybe my team can correct me if I'm wrong. The revisions of REED Act, E S S T, and summer unemployment would be three of.
Superintendent, Chair White, members of board, I would like to recommend that we potentially address the paid family medical leave as well. I think if we maybe want to talk about E S S T and paid family medical together,
Together.
if you want to only address the three. But paid family medical poses a significant risk to us, both financially and operationally with lack of resources.
I know that we, Director Franz, you said top three. Can you capture that on here, right, just by putting REED Act?
Yep.
And then, and/or, right, a note card, right? Dash how much it's going to cost our district, right? And that's it, right?
So we can put those costs?
If you either want to put it on the note card, right? Because obviously with some of the edits that you got, right, that you'll have some space on there. I think that could be helpful if you want to play that out.
We could quantify that, so you can have it right there, and those are the three biggest.
But again, I think everybody agrees like less is more on here.
And those dollar amounts are the story of our, that is the story of our district.
Exactly what I was saying, yeah.
So can I, can I just recommend like that lead-in sentence? Just start with the two bullets. Reframe from introducing additional unfunded, underfunded mandates that strain district resources and fully fund all existing state mandate programs to prevent further budget shortfalls and ensure compliance. And then from there, boom, boom, boom.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay, then I'm striking the intro sentence, and then the two bullets will become the sentence. And then we'll have the three bullets, REED Act, family medical leave, summer unemployment. Up top, striking the graphic and the, the paragraph there, I mean, we'd have the same, it would just be one sentence now.
Right.
So it won't be too little paragraph.
I just have a question. Is there any way we can write anything about that's specific to, I think it's called like equalizing or equity in the forming? I know, you know, we get some funding for a district that has a lower levy amount.
Yes, or LOR.
Yeah, so is there any way we can talk about, I don't know if there's a change in that? Or I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, what I mentioned before.
Yeah, we, we'd have two, Director Atkinson. We can address the base funding formula.
Right.
And we can talk about increasing the LOR to keep pace with inflation parallel.
Yep, that's what I'm thinking.
So then that will be the two. So we'll talk about the state's education formula not being changed since 1971, and then skip right down to the governor and legislator should increase the formula by 3% over current, blah, 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 blah. And then the second sentence will be to increase the LOR by $250 per student to keep pace with inflation. And that's that sentence, and that'll be it.
I think that's fine.
I actually, and I had provided feedback. The one thing I felt like we lost on this version was the bullet, reduce the cross subsidies in special education and English learner programs. I would love to see that added back on to this too as a bullet, if anyone agrees. I think that's a specific item.
Increase the education funding?
Yeah, in that section under the bullets if ever.
Cross subsidies bullet. And because it's going to get busy, I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep those costs off. We'll have that on that companion document. But I'll have the costs of the REED Act, paid family, and summer unemployment listed. And then the 3% and the 250, and then the other cross subsidies will be subordinated to a talking point. Okay?
So this might be a completely different conversation for a different place, but the, 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 ask for the increase over '26 and '27 kicks the can down the road a couple of years if we can get it. Where do we address the fundamental change in the funding formula that needs to take place that hasn't taken place? I mean, you, you, there's a statement here, but what's the?
That is this. So we're asking for an additional 3% on top of what they've already added to the formula. That is the structural change, foundational change.
I'm talking about moving. Where, where do we address that this hasn't really changed since 1971? And it was built for a growing student population, and now we have a declining one. And it, it's the foundation for everything that we're able to do, and it's crumbling. Where, I know that's, that's a way bigger ask, and we may, but where does that get addressed in all this? Because this, we can just keep kicking the can down the road, but it's never really going to fix the problem, is my concern.
So why don't, why don't we wordsmith Chair White that opening statement of the education funding formula not being touched since 1971 to reflect present-day
Yeah, something like that.
birth rate trends, et cetera.
Can I, I have a suggestion.
Go ahead.
And, and I talked to you.
Yeah, we did.
We did talk about this. No, it doesn't reflect, but that's just one of the many legacy items that's in that 1971. extremely large and formula that we keep adding on to without subtracting from. It seems like, uh, you know, it's kind of like the tax code. They add an adjustment to reflect something at a certain point in time. They leave all the stuff in there, so you end up with a formula that's larger than this room. Um, you know, if we're gonna do a ta- if we're pushing for a task force for assessment, wouldn't it make sense to push for a task force of actual finance directors? Uh, to do that, because I don't see leg- the, the legislature having not only the in-depth knowledge, but also the, um, tenacity, uh, to actually sit down and rewrite a formula that large. And if I've learned anything in my multi-decade career in corporate boards and corporate leadership is you never walk in with a blank sheet of paper and said, just fix it. I know, you, you have to give them the formula and have them argue it.
So we'll, we'll talk about, it's similar to down below. We'll establish a task force to address the basic education formula in the state of Minnesota, which has remained unchanged since nineteen seventy-one, full stop. Second, um, bullet will then be this, uh, sentence about stabilizing school budget with that three percent current over, you know, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Director Mason's point about, or I'm sorry, Director Atkinson's point.
Director Mason.
I came out which one it is. LOR.
Yeah.
Yep, LOR. No, no, LOR, Director Atkinson, Director Mason, cross subsidies, sped yellow. Um, and that will be it. Okay. I will wordsmith that. Um, so Chair White?
Jess, do you have anything? You look like you might.
Sorry, I have a wrench. Um, did we, well, question first. Did we say we're gonna take out this graph?
Yes.
Okay. I like the graph.
It's on two other platforms, by the way.
You're right. Um, I, I like the idea of having something visual. So I really like the nineteen seventy-one stat, right, which I know we're keeping. But the, maybe that becomes kind of like a like a, some kind of graph to replace this one, maybe not as big, right, to take up a lot of real estate on the page, but something like that to really make a point, like nineteen seventy-one people. Something to consider. Don't have to agree. Um, I, I just, that, that's, that's the one thing that I think I like the most on this piece of paper is nineteen seventy-one, the funding formula. And to Director Francis' point, you know, we've got state legislators that don't understand school finance. Um, and I think that is a big stat that I'd like to see featured, I guess, even, even more prominently. Um, and then as an aside, and I, I want to be very careful not to get too off-topic. Um, but I, more or less for the record, and I can write it down, I would like to have a broader conversation on the discipline policy, because we haven't talked about that much.
The non-exclusionary?
Yeah.
Law?
Um.
The dis- the discipline law?
Yeah, correct. The non-exclusionary discipline policy for K through three students. I would like to have more of a conversation around that. Not now. Um, and I know that, uh, Principal Glenn testified about that at the state, and he, I gotta say, you know, I'm, I'm still on the fence about that. I don't know how I feel about it, but he brought up a lot of really good points, and I think I would just really like for a study session to talk more about that, because we really haven't, and it's on our platform. And I'm okay with that. Um.
I would say, hold that thought.
Yes.
And remind me on the twenty-fourth.
Absolutely will.
All right.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Great work, and I, I like the footer too, where it encompasses what all is included in our district.
Okay.
That was a nice ad. I meant to say that.
So are we okay with Dr. Thomas fixing it up, and we can approve it as we think it's going to look? Director Herman?
Chair White, members of the board, just to make sure we have clarity on the costing. Um, we can provide, like, for unemployment, for example, we can provide what the actual costs were to us, but that's only thirty percent of the eligible folks that could have applied for unemployment. Um, so would you like us to include the dollar amount for what the actual cost was, or what a potential risk is? Because those are two different numbers. Our potential risk is one point two million every summer, if everyone that we feel would be eligible, applied. Um, but we only had thirty percent apply. So I don't think it'll be one point two million, but that's the, that's the ultimate risk. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on what numbers you're hoping to get printed on the document. Then we can include both those numbers and the, the additional one.
But we'll use potential risk on the platform one pager.
Yep.
And then we'll give you the range, um, on your cheat sheet.
That's helpful.
Thank you. Are there any legal risks to putting numbers on this?
No.
Just to be sure.
Mm-mm. We're, we're, we're coding. These are potential risks. We're not saying th- this will happen, but this is what our legislature needs to understand. Words on paper equal dollar signs in the field. And, um, and I'm not trying to shock and awe, but this is very real. This is.
Yeah.
It's gonna run, it's gonna, the well's gonna run dry in twenty-six, and we're gonna be on the hook for one point two million dollars, you know, uh, on various aspects. Or if, you know, we can't get our foundations reimbursed to then free up that fund one to do something else with, we're now stuck with that, you know? If we change our calendar, um, we're on the hook with PD. So they need to understand the implications, and we're, we're advocating for our needs, but we're also advocating for the collective, because the more people that are sharing numbers with them, that, that's real. So I think it's important, um, that we'll capture that, and then you'll, you'll have the range for your own copy. But the im- the potential impact is something that I think we should lead. I would agree that we would lead with that.
And are we saying that there's not room to have a, what our actual, actual was, and then the potential, both of them on there? Is there, if there's, if that was created to be too busy, I would take your direction on that. But I think, um, for me, like, when I hear, um, percentages or, um, you know, statistics, many times when people are talking statistics, I think you, anyone can pull a statistic. Anyone can say whatever they want, and to me, I don't put a ton of weight in it, because there's not proof behind it. I mean, people who can make statistics about anything, it's just, that's my feeling towards.
Yeah.
Potential risk. It doesn't, um, ha- it doesn't have the, um, weight of our re- our current reality attached to it, if that makes sense. So having both, to me, I think, um, enhances maybe the credibility of the, the amounts. Instead of just stating the, d- does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I actually would disagree. I think both amounts are gonna be confusing, and also because it was the first year that this was really in place. We, we didn't have a lot of people, potentially as many as they could, and we have to budget and plan for that maximum risk, which would be if everyone that was eligible took advantage for it. So that's our net cost. If we start conflating that with, well, only twelve out of twenty-four people in this group took it, but next year it could be all of them, we're gonna, we're gonna confuse the legislators, and we're gonna get into a conversation that detracts from the goal of actually removing that risk altogether. That would be my opinion on that.
That does make sense to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Is there anything else regarding the legislative platform? Well, entertain a motion then to approve the two thousand twenty-five legislative platform.
With conditional edits.
With changes?
Yes.
So made.
By Amy, second by Charles. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving down to policy, we have several policies, uh, presented for second final reading. Uh, Director Hermanson, anything we should know before entertaining a motion?
Chair White, members of the board, um, we just made the edits that were discussed at the work session. There's no additional changes that were made, besides those that were agreed upon at the work session with the will of the board.
All right. Well, then, uh, I will entertain a motion to.
I, I had, I had, I had sent in a per- uh, a suggested change on the maximum walking distance that we add, um, that the state statute that you referenced there indicates two miles, and we're doing one point five. Um, just to make sure that we're clear in the policy, that we are less than our policy is less. Um, and I did send that in writing.
I apologize about that for the board discussion. Um, to caveat, we are less than the state statute, which is the two mile, and you all were not comfortable going to the two mile um, in the policy. So the recommendation, um, that, uh, Director France was offering was, um, to state what the state policy is and where we are landing in terms of our practice in the policy itself, so that it's clear that we are under the two mi- the two mile. That was her recommendation. Correct?
That is, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask, is there a purpose or a reasoning as to having that?
Um, well, first of all, um, it is unknown, but in the statute itself, it is kind of buried. Um, and it's couched in a lot of language. But one of the reasons why the administration wanted to change it, because we're still saying the maximum, because the maximum is two miles. Um, and that, um, there was, you know, we have chosen as a district to stay at the maximum of these, uh, levels. And I do think it's important to call that out as people are reading this, because every year when the bus schedules come out and people find out where their kids are being picked up or dropped off, they do do a search online, they find this, they're not looking through the detail of all the statutes, and they need to understand how we're operating now in, in their best interest, especially given the placement of some of the busy roads and things like that. So I do think it's a good thing to actually call it out. Um, and, um, I think it'll only help us in the long run, especially if there comes a time where we do want to change that to two miles. Uh, let's say if we rearrange, um, you know, the, the boundaries or something like that because of a school closing, we may have to go revisit that, and I think it's important that everyone remembers that we purposely went under.
I, I personally think we have the statute listed. Um, I think it's confusing. If you all of a sudden start adding in something else that's different, people are gonna ask, well, then is it two miles? Is it one and a half miles? And I think there's a reason why we have it stated as one and a half miles, so I, I don't, um, support adding that in. Um, because like I said, I think it creates confusion, so.
I don't know, um, Director Bullion or Director Herman, have, have you guys heard anything like that from the policy committee on adding that type of language in? I would just, you know, before we, before we, we do it, you know, we have a policy committee, you know?
We had.
I'm okay with, if that's the will of the board to do it, um.
At the policy committee, if, if I am recalling correctly, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, Director Herman. But at the policy committee, there was, there was quite a bit of conversation regarding that, you know, going to what the statute says, that we don't have to change our practice in district, but going to what the statute said. And at the study session, it was the will of the board to keep it at the lower.
Oh, so what I asked really doesn't apply.
So, you know, there, there was lots of discussion at the policy committee of why to allow our district, uh, greater flexibility, and that we wouldn't have to pull the policy back to review. Um, that wouldn't, changing the policy would not change our, our district practice. Um, but it was the will of the board from the study session to keep it at the lower amount. Um, I have no opinion regarding adding the language or not adding the, the language. I feel like policy is confusing enough, so there's always gonna be someone confused. Right? And so I don't, I have no preference either way. Um, I always think less is more. Uh, that will always be my answer, and.
I don't know that I have a strong preference, but just a question, are we referencing where we differ from state statute and other places? I guess just generally, is that a good practice, or?
Um, the, so if you look at other districts, they will fall, they will fall back on, um, the transportation costs and stuff like that to the mileage, and, uh, and they lean on this policy a lot. And what I remember of what I was able to hear of that policy committee meeting, because that's the day I came in late, um, was, uh, basically there was a lot of confusion, and people didn't know it was really two miles, and we did make a conscious decision to bring it down to one point five and, and the ensuing, in, uh, conversation. And, um, again, um, I, I know that, being in the position that I've been in before here, that the transportation and this policy gets a lot of attention when those bus pickup schedules come out. Um, and I do think it would be in our best interest to point out that the statute says two miles and the, but the board policy is one point five. And it doesn't substantially change anything in here, but it does help educate, um, the reader a little bit more as to the fact that we, of our own volition, made this choice.
Would it be possible just to write the actual statute number on there, so that, I think we even talked about like hyperlinking. I understand it's on the bottom, but there's like twenty statutes on the bottom, so I'm not even myself not sure which statute that has that written in. But I'm just wondering if we were to have the statute there as a hyperlink or have it written there, um, then at least it's there as a reference. So if there is a dispute, because it sounds like there would only be a dispute i- if somebody was disputing the the situation with their student, that they're, that they would be going to look for the statute, or would have, want to have an understanding of the statute.
Oh, I don't think it's a dispute issue. I, I think it's an education issue within the policy itself, and because the policy, the statute does, um, and I don't even know which one it is, but I remember I looked it up. It's not a bold and, you know, thing to, to try and find and all that. The statutes with regards to this have been added on over time, so they're a little bit tedious to, to go through. It's just a suggestion, um, and I'm, and it's for the purpose of educating, uh, the parents, and particularly the parents who go online to read this policy. And I do, do think it's a, it's a, it makes us look good, actually, too.
I'm just gonna agree with Director Bullion, less is, less is more, right? Policy's confusing enough, so.
Well, then, if I could.
It's on there, so.
Um, entertain a motion to approve these policies as presented. Um, then we can just vote and be done with it. So, um, at this point, if there's no further discussion, um, I will entertain a motion to approve, um, policy seven oh seven, seven oh eight, seven oh nine, seven one three, seven one four, eight oh two, nine oh one, and nine oh one point two as presented.
So made.
By Charles.
Second.
By Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving down to administrative reports, superintendent report, Dr. Thomas.
Chair White, members of the board, um, just a couple of quick things, uh, as we were talking about the legislative agenda. Um, uh, one of the things I will share with you that advocacy matters. We are already seeing a new bill introduced called React Reset. REACT, I'm sorry, REACT Reset. And, uh, they are going to be modifying some of the, uh, timelines um, around professional development, as well as some of the conflicts of curriculum adoption and approval processes. Um, so more to come on that, but, you know, we'll see how it makes its way through session. But clearly, that was a big thing that many of us talked about, and it's good to see that, um, coming into introduction. Um, just a reminder for our community, our annual staff window, or our annual survey, stakeholder survey for staff, students, and families opens up February twenty-fourth and runs through March fourteenth, so be looking out for that. And, um, this is our third year utilizing this, um, survey. It's been very helpful for us. And then lastly, um, we just launched our Laker Lighthouse. Um, and this is our opportunity to start capturing promising practices throughout our district. It's a great way to give shout-outs to our colleagues as well. But, um, more so when we see some great practices happening, being able to start warehousing some of that, so we can share these practices. So for example, um, the second half of the school year, my intentional touch point with schools outside of my, you know, informal, um, checkpoints with visits, et cetera, is to attend all of our BILTS. And I'm telling you, uh, the, what I'm learning, um, attending these BILT meetings is powerful, and I'm hearing some themes emerge. And, uh, there's one partic- And there's one particular practice, ironically, around standards that has been coming up at a couple of our BILTS. And the standards in the, the language that's used within the assessment protocols is not aligned. And so, our old way of teaching was on lower-level vocabulary for what we would expect our kids to accomplish. Whereas new standards are pushing for higher-order thinking. And the language is fundamentally different within the rubric. So, I just observed one of our coaches doing a lesson on this at a, at a BILT, which was just amazing. To be able to capture that, put that into the Laker Lighthouse, and then people can go to that and start seeing that for themselves. Or if I'm a fourth-grade teacher and I have this stellar math lesson that occurs, I upload it into the fourth-grade warehouse site. And every fourth-grade teacher now can go to that warehouse, that lighthouse, sorry, and take a look under the fourth-grade tab and start looking at promising practices for fourth grade. So, it's not just what's happening in my building. I can learn from my colleagues all across the district. So, there's a lot of excitement around that. Educators are humble folks. So, it's gonna take some coaching to get them to start populating this and let us brag on them for a little bit. But we do wanna make sure that we're sha, sharing that promising practice. So, that launched last week. So, if you're out and about and, and you see some things, and it's not just what happens in the classroom, it could be an operational aspect of our district that you find to be very efficient. Or something that you, that you'd noticed. You can put that into the lighthouse and, or at least get that to me. And I can upload, I, because I, I just thought about that. I don't know if it's open to everyone to upload, so I'll take a look at that. Nonetheless, you can capture some of those promising practices, too. So, those are my updates, Chair White.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Any administrative reports?
I'll just add to the conversation we had earlier tonight, specific to high school math. And just once again emphasize that we are going to be bringing back a Kuwait, K-12 update to our district Teaching and Learning Advisory in March. And subsequently, we'll bring it here to the March 10th Board Meeting as well. Once again, we are in year two of our elementary implementation. We're in year one of our middle school implementation, as we discussed briefly tonight. We are still investigating and looking at best ways to meet the standards at the high school level. So, that will be the focus of that presentation at the Teaching and Learning. And then subsequently, here at the board. So, I look forward to providing those updates.
Thank you, Dr. Gregory.
Dr. Rogers, I have a question for you. Last year at this time, we, at this board meeting, particularly in February, we reviewed FastBridge scores. Do you, can you give an update as far as when the board can receive, will be receiving an update on academics?
That's what I thought. Thank you, Martha. You walked in just at the right time. There will be content that we'll bring to the study session on February 24th. We just are, the window just recently closed. We're still cleaning up some of the assessment. Making sure everybody's had the assessments that they need.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to board reports.
Thank you, Board Chair White and members of the board. I guess I'll end the meeting on a lighter note and just tell you guys what's happening in and around the high school. Obviously, a lot of our winter sports are wrapping up and a lot of our spring sports are starting. So, look out for any state or section games and tournaments. Right now, we're planning the culture fair, which I'm excited for, our Laker Leaders Talent Show. And obviously, we have the Polar Plunge this weekend, so I hope to see you guys there. This week, right now, we are, Student Council is in our snowball week. We have our dance this Saturday. And we just started with our free pancake breakfast this morning. Obviously, we have a lot of exciting events for our student body. But I'd like to invite all of you guys to our winter carnival this Thursday. It's at 5:30 at the high school. And it's a great event for the kids. It's a Make-A-Wish Foundation fundraiser, so it's for a great cause. And I'm happy to report that overall, we've noticed like a tremendous difference in energy and spirit in the school. We really wanted to, with this, with all these events, like build up like community and make sure everyone's like happy still in the winter and stuff. So, it's, we're, since we start promoting these events, there's a lot more positivity, especially compared to last year. So, I hope to provide a good report once this week is over. And then after this week, we'll continue to focus on our year-long school goals and start planning for spring events. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other board reports, starting to my right? Anyone?
Yes. Couple of things. Just a plug for Annie Junior at the Middle School. This week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Tickets are going fast, so really looking forward to those performances. And wish a lot of luck to our, our actors and our tech crew and all of the staff involved in that as well. A quick Southwest Metro update. We've just started going through and reviewing a lot of our policies for that as well. So, we're starting, much like we do here, started to do that. It's really interesting to see any comparisons when it comes to policies. It's just a really good education. And one of the biggest pieces of news out of Southwest Metro is we are moving forward with a strategic plan facilitator, Grace Belvedere Young. And we are going to learn more from that consultancy at a all-day retreat here in a, a couple of week ends on Saturday, on the 22nd. So, there's more than just the strategic plan going on at that retreat. But that's gonna be a major part of it. So, I'm looking forward to reporting back. Teaching and Learning Committee, and I'm very embarrassed to say that I forgot my notebook at home. So, Mary, I'm gonna have to call on you, my friend, as the other TNL Committee meeting representative and Dr. Edwards here. We talked through Read Act Professional Development. And we had a couple of guest teachers speak at our committee last week, which was really great, really good update on how they're thinking through professional development. We also received a social studies review update. And there's more to come on that. But it was really great to start that conversation, start that conversation. And then, very quickly, it's been on my mind all day. If anybody watched the Super Bowl last night, and there was a wonderful commercial from the NFL about I Am Somebody. I don't know if you saw that. But it was all these kids just repeating, 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 I Am Somebody. And that's just kind of who I thought of when these littles were in front of us earlier tonight. And I meant to say this then, but it, it was just very, very, like I said, it's just been on my mind all day. And that's just like who we sit up here for. And repeating back that they are somebody. And it was just, it was very wonderfully done. So, if you haven't seen it, YouTube it. It's a really great thing. And it was just really great heading into this meeting tonight and heading into the week. And it was just a great ad. So, it was obviously been on my mind today. So, those are my board reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Charles?
I don't have a lot. The MSHSL is in full swing for ninth grade coming full on. So, they are in draft for the 2, 3, and 400 series. So, other than that, they should be, they're raring and ready to go. Once it, you know, hits the ground right. Other than that, looking forward to my first policy meeting on Thursday. And then, yeah, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
I have nothing, thank you.
Amy?
Charles and I attended a MSBA negotiations seminar last week, the last two weeks, actually. And even more respect for all that you do.
Second. Yes.
Thank you. But it was, it was, it was a great, a great seminar, so thank you.
All right. Mary?
Well, first, just to reiterate what Jess said. We discussed the process and what's gonna be coming in addition to the professional development for the Read Act for the upcoming review of the social studies curriculum. So, that will be starting with the next meeting. As far as everything else goes, I'm on the Scale Executive Committee now. They asked me to join that. So, I went to that on Friday morning. And we discussed a lot of upcoming things that were going on and the, the theme and topics for discussion. And so, I learned a lot about anaerobic breakdown of our waste materials as well as the landfill crisis that Scott County is going through. And there will be more to, to come on that as they bring in the speakers and the, and discuss it with the entire Scale Committee coming up. Other than that, Scale had their legislative session, which of course is a little bit different than the educational piece. But they did have their Legislative Committee meeting on, this morning, actually. And so, that agenda is taking shape. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, with a lot of the building codes and land, land alignment and a few other items, so.
Thank you. Anything, Jessica?
I just wanted to add, I attended the last community coffee and conversations. And I thought it was a really great discussion and informative from our neurodiverse learners. And just wanted to say thank you to the CME organization for that partnership and for attending.
Thank you. I had a chance to attend my first, it was virtual, my first AMSD meeting. And a lot of interesting discussion, I thought, around the way Saint Cloud is implementing, how they use AI. And they had an administrator there and a teacher. And it was just, I thought, a very interesting conversation, how they put guyrails in place and all the things that you worry about when it comes to AI. I thought it would be very informative. And Thursday, I think it's Thursday, Monday this week, I have the opportunity to go to Twin Oaks and help judge the history project contest, which will be, I'm looking forward to that. So, if there's nothing else, I will now entertain a motion to close the meeting in order to move into a closed session for the purpose of discussing superintendent media feedback. So, I'll entertain a motion.
So made.
By Jess, second by Amy. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Let's take five minutes to, if the room's clear, and back to it.